This is a regular meeting in the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings act. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its meeting schedule for the year. Notice, the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and material files on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. That notice was also posted on the voting board in Borough Hall and as may continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file at the office of Borough Court. Copy of the notice has also been sent to the members of the public as have entrusted such information to the quarters of the statute. Adequate notice having been given, board secretary is direct to include the statement in the minutes of the meeting.
Mr. McChesney?
Yeah, I'm not there yet.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Praying the pause.
Long pause.
Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words. The applicants are experts in the audience, but we're all in authority of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Board is separate and independent municipal legal agency and its limited authority is specifically set forth in Borough ordinances within New Jersey municipal land use law of its quasi judicial nature and matters with the board or unpaid volunteers appointed at the mayor and council. Zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws regulations, the Borough Council does that. Zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough Fairhaven. It is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief and requirements to grow the land use laws or denials by the known officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey municipal land use law and the Fairhaven zoning ordinance by satisfying certain required standards approved. Board has no authority to weigh these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zoning plan. Variants related to the future use of land are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or any personal situations. Broke offers.
Mr. McChesney?
Here.
Mrs. D'Angelo? Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Forthay?
Here.
Dr. Longer?
Here.
Mrs. Noonan?
Here.
Mr. Canella? Mr. DiVetti?
Here.
Mr. Laver?
Here.
Okay. Wow, thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, no indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
To your recusing. I don't should about that. Okay, first matter is the McChesney matter. As many of your all the ways to come forward, there's a way to end. So as far as that point here before there will be, there's a whole thing something about the person.
Yes, I do.
With your instruction, please state your name, report each protest, find, spell your last name. For permission counts, I'd like to mark two exhibits. Like to mark the application of the checklist as one exhibit as A one. The architecture of site management from porch plan elevations. Uh, dated August sixth, week three five un revised, A two. That made just about survey by insight. Survey dated January sixth, twenty twenty three, un revised, A three. Zoning firm denial dated August twenty five, point five. A four, Mr. Verran, it is undated, A five. Statement of legal basis for granting variance is sought, updated, A six. Uh, A seven are age covered images of the subject dwelling adjacent properties on the day. Uh, ZB one will be the CME report for the signature of Jordan Rizzo aired in ten fifteen, twenty twenty five. Do you have any other exhibits that you want the board to consider?
Um, I don't think so at this point.
Okay, your next one will be A seven, I'm sorry, A eight. A eight, but you have another exhibit.
Okay. Okay, I think I missed one then, but okay. Um, we'll figure it out. Okay.
Real quick. Here, may I just run through the checklist?
Okay.
Thanks, um, so you'll hear it from the plus morning that this is a front porch, so there's a little bit more than unusual, but there's a completed application checklist. Um, I printed it and completed myself, so that's not an issue. Uh, complete floor plans for existing and proposed, again, this is a front porch, so, um, so long as there's no change to the floor area, I don't take exception to that. Elevations of all sides of the structures. Um, the front partial left and partial right side were provided, so the rear wasn't divided because the front porch is in front. Um, calculation of the floor area, um, so long as there's no net change, uh, I don't take exception to that. Location and type of attic access. Again, so, so there's no change, I don't take exception. And then a key map with the two hundred foot boundary showing, um, which is, which is okay for the sudden.
Recommend those waivers be granted?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And any questions about the floor layers?
Yeah.
Okay. Rob?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair Members Board, Rick Rosky, on behalf of the applicants, Peter, Melissa, McChesney. Application, the application before you this evening pertains to the property located at one oh seven Park Lane. Uh, it's a single family, uh, uh, residential home about seventy five years old, I believe. Um, the, uh, the, the, the long and short of the application is a proposed front porch, uh, to rep, uh, there's designed to replace an existing small overhang in the front. Uh, uh, in connection with that application, um, the applicant need seeks variance approval uh, for front yard setback, uh, in as much as the approximate seven foot by twenty three foot front porch is set back. Um, nineteen feet from the property line in the front, uh, where approximately twenty two exists and twenty five feet is required in the zone. Um, that's the only new variance associated with the application that's on setback. There are a couple of, um, I would say de minimis existing nonconformities. Not sure how, but, um, they, the rear yard setback of the home has been measured to be on this survey twenty nine point nine feet where thirty is required. And side setback on the shed is nine point nine feet where ten feet are required, both uh, unrelated and unaffected by the application, could be a surveying error, could be a survey inconsistency, but i- i- in any event, number one de minimis and number two unaffected by the application for this front yard porch. Um, before I turn it over to, um, Mr. Shisai, it's the architect, I just wanted to point out that with respect to the front, uh, setback that's proposed, uh, and I know it, it, it doesn't alleviate the necessity of the, of, of the, uh, uh, requested variance, there is actually a, a, about a nine foot distance between, uh, uh, the front, the front property line and the curb, uh, within the right of way. So to the eye, um, even though, uh, the front porch is set back and only the front porch is set back nineteen feet from the property line, there's another nine feet or so to the curb line, so aesthetically, um, it's certainly much closer to that thirty foot, uh, required setback than, um, uh, it is than the nineteen feet proposed would suggest. Um, there are, uh, so the front porch, if you will, that exists today is about forty six square feet, very small, not really usable as a front porch, more of a covering. And as I said, the seven foot by twenty three foot, um, proposed front porch, about a hundred and sixty square feet, um, hundred sixty one square feet is what's proposed as part of the application. Um, there was, there was some discussion as to perhaps, you know, for typically eight feet would be or eight foot depth would be the typical, uh, fully functional front porch, um, depth or width that would be proposed, but the thought process behind having it at seven feet was twofold. Um, one was to not disturb the existing walkway, uh, on the property. And secondly, and probably more importantly, there's a nice big birch tree there that would, uh, come into play if it went to eight feet, which is why it was, uh, designed at seven feet. No issues with building coverage, no issues with block coverage, no change, no changes to the FAR. Um, and I think that is it. Having said that, unless the board has any questions, what I'd like to do is, uh, ask the project architect, architect, Mr. Shisai, who's been sworn in to just walk the board through the plan.
Mr. Rosky, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the zoning table and the CME report and obviously focusing on the front of setbacks.
Yes.
What I see here on page is a plus or minus twenty two feet is the existing condition?
Yes.
And twenty five foot is the requirement.
Correct.
The survey seems to show to the left front corner of the house, twenty six feet is the house. There is not a second measurement, so I assume the house is square of the property line, is that right?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So it's twenty six all across?
Yes.
And so the, uh, front porch is showing right now the front scoop, twenty one point two, is that what it is to the front of the concrete?
That's correct.
So Mr. Chair, my plus or minus twenty two would be to either the covered porch or the first, sorry, face of the second stair.
Face of the second stair.
Which is how I would measure it. Oh, okay.
So what's the twenty one point two of the survey measured?
That looks like it's the face of the first stair. So that's why mine, plus or minus is a little bit larger.
I see.
Oh, there.
Okay, and, and the proposal, just, just maybe to complete this, so, so the proposal effectively is to put the front porch to protrude seven feet from the front of the house from the twenty six, so you wind up at nineteen, and that's a real number, that's not a plus or minus number, right?
That's correct.
And with regard to how it shows on the survey, effectively the porch would be inside of the existing walkway and extend horizontally across the front?
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, so on the, so that the lot line ends here, and then there's, there's some depth of space between here and the concrete curb?
About nine feet.
Yeah, yeah, to define here for council.
Yeah, I think I know what he's talking about.
Yeah.
The, it's on property line?
That's right, so are you, are you saying it would, uh, would appear to someone that doesn't know that, that it's a little bit deeper than it is because they're, they're unaware that it ends?
That's exactly right, that's exactly right, and, and we're unaware of any plans to widen, uh,
Park Lane.
The, the park lane.
Okay, so, Mr. Rosky, when, uh, including the steps, how much closer to the street is the proposed as opposed to the existing?
Um, so let me have Al answer that to give you an exact number, because I don't want to misspeak.
Do I need to, uh, do the name and everything?
Yeah, I'd like to spell your last name.
He was born, he was born, yeah.
Yep, so Al Shisai, uh, last name S H I, S S I A S, registered architect and landscape architect, state of New Jersey.
Have you gotten certifications since your last, uh, acknowledgement with that?
No.
That's good job.
Surprise.
Questions or comments?
Good.
Okay, yeah, okay, Al, uh, first, if you could answer before you start, answer Dr. Lauper's question with regard to how much closer to the front proper design, let's say?
Yep.
If the new porch is going to be, uh, as opposed to existing?
So right now, to measure to the front step, as, as Mr. Rizzo pointed out, I think the measurement he had in his report is to the second step. To the front step, it's four foot, eight inches and a half existing. We are going to be to the front of the porch, which also winds up with an inset, uh, step at seven feet, so the difference would be, uh, two feet, three and a half inches, so call it two point three, two point three feet closer.
Let's get the protrusion as two point three feet forward where the forward step is currently and then extended.
And that's also effectively the exacerbation, no?
That is.
With, with the right, and then you got to fill again because it's a scoop, no?
Definitely.
So, so one of the, one of the steps is inset into the porch?
Correct, that was done, um, primarily in this case, actually, because of the walkway. We're intruding just a little bit in the walkway with, um, but yeah, we didn't want to bump out further into that walkway. We didn't want to repave, but primarily there's also a tree that would be affected by that, so.
So we're talking a little over two feet and then, of course, the width of the face of the twenty three feet or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Net of whatever is in this.
Yeah, the, the covered entry right now is nine and a half feet wide, the proposed covered porch would be just shy of twenty three.
Okay, I would support two feet and then two. Just engage.
I would bring the board's attention in Mr. Rizzo's report, if you can see through the Halloween decorations, you'll see the birch tree. And on the earlier page, you can see the proximity of the birch tree to your walkway. And so all the construction being on the inside of that walkway, you know, that tree is going to be a pretty good distance from the, uh, the construction.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So, so you mentioned that the second foot is designed because of partial, because of the tree?
Tree and the walkway, yeah.
So eight foot would be a concern, but one foot less than seven feet.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, I think seven's comfortable in this case, uh, I wouldn't go less than that, but also because it's close to grade or probably it's less than a foot and a half out of grade, so we don't need a guard rail, so it's not like when the homeowners, um, you know, are sitting there, they're looking at a round, so I think seven, seven's plenty good, um, but I, I think that's comfortable. Correct.
Okay, Al, if we can just walk the board through, um, we kind of hit some of it, but, uh,
Sure.
Um, we know what's existing there now.
Yep.
Uh, the small covered porch, I guess, if you would, or covering?
Covered entry.
Or covered entry, yeah.
Yeah.
And then what's proposed as part of the application?
Yeah, so currently, I don't have an existing elevation, but if you have photos, you can see right now it's, it's, it's a ranch structure, there's a covered entry. And then in, in the vicinity, pretty similar to actually how we designed it, there is a kind of a gable decorative feature on the roof. We're proposing something similar, it's not the exact same location, but this main gable you see up top, that's actually going to lock, the gable end wall will align with the existing front facade. And then what we're going to do is have, we're proposing to have a hip roof come out to actually cover the, uh, porch to create the covered porch portion, and then also a small gable centered over the, uh, front door with equidistant, uh, narrow columns on each side. Um, and then overall, the porch is positioned roughly equal on the main house, if you take off the, uh, kind of side entry and garage, but, uh, this volume is roughly centered. Part of the reason to do that is it, it did feel more balanced, it's not going to interfere with the tree that we mentioned, there's also a bunch of gas utilities there. And I think most importantly, this window on the right side is a living room and it would darken that, so that's how we came up with the location of the porch.
Are there any other architectural changes planned for the facade of the house?
No, I don't, I don't think we're proposing to do anything else, they are going to be redoing the roof, uh, I, I probably maybe siding. I don't think we're proposing to move any windows around, but nothing at least additionally, that's for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the total width of the porch?
Uh, just shy of twenty three.
So it assumes the existing stoop, does it project to the right or is it just hold the line on the stoop and then project entirely to the left?
Mostly on the left, it comes in maybe six inches from the right, just a little bit, you can kind of see there's a dash line right there. Um, but basically it holds the right side, it works its way left.
And are you stepping up into the house off the porch or are you able to do the grid?
Uh, I think I've got it like four or six inches.
So a slight step.
Yeah, a little sill, yep. So it'll be, yeah, just two risers down to the step and then no guardrail needed or anything like that.
Have you looked at other houses on the street to see what their front yard setbacks are?
Yeah, they are, they are, the, the main house itself is roughly comparable, we don't have those numbers surveyed. This front porch would project beyond that, but the other houses, they're, they're newer homes, they're two story homes. Uh, they kind of go in and out a little bit, roughly, they're all equal with the main house. Uh, so this porch would project beyond that. Uh, I, I don't see this being a significant projection or intrusion, uh, it is one of probably a few ranches left on the street. I don't think it's going to feel out of character or out of scale, um, but the other homes do seem to be, you know, roughly at the the setback of the existing home.
Does the right of way relative to the lot line exist on the other side of the street as well, where it has that same feel?
I, I mean, it feels generally equal, I, I don't have that information.
So I'm going to ask the five, I'm going to ask the same question again, but I just want to make sure that I heard the answer correctly. Do we know the measurements of the front yard setbacks of the, the house to the right, and then I know that we're on the left, there's a corner, do we have any sense of what those are? I'm interested in whether or not, if you look down the side, whether this is going to be in line or whether this is going to project forward of that.
So we, we did bring another exhibit for, for this, uh, just an aerial, so if we could submit that, we didn't know if this was going to be something the board was interested in.
To indicate, uh, aerial, uh, in general street for depiction on street or on?
This is just off the, what's there now, I don't know how old it is, it looks pretty, pretty concurrent with what's actually built.
Your property, when that was taken? It's a Google shot?
Yeah, it's a Google shot, probably within the last couple of years. Uh, what I'm looking at here seems to show the new homes on the side of the street. Uh, this is, this is park along here, this is a subject property, again, one story ranch. Uh, a lot of the other houses have been, you know, either torn down or rebuilt and kind of more in the, the style that's more typical of the neighborhood. So you can see here, this is the front facade of the property, and you can kind of see if you go down the, the way, I'd say they're roughly equal, looks like some project a little further, a little back then, but I don't think, in, in my opinion, doing a one story open porch like this, I don't think it's going to, uh, have any negative impact.
So I know the houses to the right as we're looking at it, both of those houses are remodeled, pared down, it's entirely new.
Correct.
This is all within the same zone, right, this saw or ten?
I believe so.
And hang whatever. And so I, I, it's safe to assume that those houses are holding the setback line, our house is actually set back a foot, and so the net result is going to be, we're going to be a full seven feet in front of the ones on the right.
I, I would roughly agree with that.
And what do we know about the one on the corner?
Corner property looks, it's hard to say exactly where this.
All we have in cap is technically ten B. Ten B, thank you.
And the ten B.
So they would have had.
And that's the rear of that house, the corner faces, um.
Well, well, it's a second front facing park, right, so they would have had two front yard setbacks, that's also a brand new house.
Yeah.
So unless you tell them you analyze, I think I'm going to assume they're holding twenty five feet as well.
I think that's pretty fair.
That's right.
Pretty consistent.
Well, didn't come here, right? Yeah, no, I don't remember anymore.
Yeah.
Except.
Yeah. So of course, this is driven by the existing location, obviously at the existing home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is also a neighborhood too, right, when you drive, when you drive through, not only has a lot of it been turned over, as we're all well aware, but the houses are all, you know, it's very, uh, it's a very dense facade kind of scape as you go down through this neighborhood, because a lot of them have turned over, they're all generally, you would assume they're complying.
There's only two other Allen ranches left there, they're both on the other side of the street.
Yep.
One on the far corner on the lower right there and one on the lower left directly.
Is it in the?
Well, on the outside of the street. On the outside corner, the one all the way down on the right, we did grant the variance for, for that porch.
Yeah.
That was the one that came in piecemeal, if you recall.
Yeah.
But we did grant the variance for front yard on that, that one right there, is that one of the ones you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying the general, uh, they're, they're not tear down two story, you know, maxed out.
Right.
Bulk, they're, they're, the, the skeleton is original Allen Ranch.
And, and not all two houses, two story houses are the same. The impression I have when I drive down this street is that you get a lot of bulk at the street.
Yes.
You've got the full two stories straight up, I don't know if it's all exactly at the twenty five, but they're imposing. Um, and so if, if you're sort of considering this in the context of that, there's already a sense of.
That's kind of what I was communicating, I'm saying, if you come down, it's kind of like a wall of facade, I think.
I agree with that.
It's those, that, the opposite side is bookended by two of the closer to the original Allen ranches. There's one in the middle there somewhere that's, um, compared to the rest of the two stories on the block, it's almost capish, but it's still a two story.
There's like the orange one with handicap ramps and that kind of thing, it's lower, there's one that's newer and lower.
Yeah.
And, but we don't necessarily know what the, uh, front yard setback that's held across the street. It, it, the, the one in the center, it looks like it may project towards street.
Yeah, that looks visually closer.
This is not the scale, um, I mean, I could just roughly measure what it would be. So this, okay, this is like called one point five inches across the street, it's about one and five eighths.
What about the middle one, the next one to the right, yeah?
Next, next one would be, and this is from the curb, one and three quarters.
Yeah.
You go down the street here, this is one in a little, little more than one and a quarter, so this one bumps out. I think, I think that's a garage, that's actually same side of the street. Um, yeah, these seem to be one and a half, one and a half. I think these are all, these look to be equal to this, this looks like it has a portion bumps out a little bit.
I'm going to guess that road isn't square with regard to the way the right way was cut in, and I'm going to guess that it trends to the upside of that picture.
It does.
Come toward that bend.
It does, because it's thirty wide on center, but then if you look at the dimensions here, it's actually thirty one point nine seven and the right away is fifty, right? So that gives you that roughly nine change on each side.
Yeah, so the road, while the road technical is getting very, they have fifty, and so if a regular movement, right? The perception might be that the other ones are slightly closer, although they're probably holding twenty five.
I think that's also the only thing, saving that neighborhood from not looking like they're totally in on the road, because it's only twenty five feet, but if you have this eight or nine, it visually gives you that depth, otherwise it would, it would feel even.
I discount that, I appreciate that Mr. Rosky brought it to our attention, but that's by, by and large, the, 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 the most common scenario is most people have an area of approximately ten feet, I don't realize it, but they do.
I'm sure they have one of them. I'm not know about like, hello, all right, anyway, nevertheless. Okay.
No, I have a few questions, which is, yeah, um, from my letter. In your conversations with your client, um, the survey from twenty twenty three is accurate, just been made to property? Since that was completed?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe there were any changes, they're clear accurate to me.
And then, um, there have been no drainage issues that, that they're aware of, that have been brought to your attention, correct?
No, we talked about that, that based on your, your report, and there, there weren't any.
Can I definitely ask about that shed, so I understand the shed's nine point nine from the left sideline, is the requirement ten feet?
Yes.
All right.
And that, that could just be a simple survey issue.
Well, or it could be laid slightly off.
Could be laid slightly.
As long as it's planned and it's nine point nine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Looks like it was intended to.
It's like the same situation with the owner's setback.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, just to be clear, on this, the applic, application document showed an increase in floor area, I think that was just a typo probably left on there, but just, can you just?
There definitely is no floor area increase.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, Al will get you the accurate number, but there's no change to floor area, I saw that in your report. Do you know the height of the porch?
Um.
Not, not, not on your plan, the application document. I just want the records to reflect that.
Oh, okay, I got you, yeah, there's definitely no interior, uh, things, there's no increase in floor. The height, so the height from the front grade, I have it from average grade, which is a little lower because of the, the slope down toward the dry, uh, garage. Uh, I would say it's, it's around sixteen, right now sixteen, one and threes from average, um. Yeah, sixteen, a little less from the grade in front.
The porches?
Yeah, that the peak of the porch roof.
Peak, the top peak.
Top peak.
What about like, um?
The actual elevation of the, the decking or masonary? Probably, I think it's about six to fourteen inches or so.
Two steps.
Two steps. It's not going to be much more than that.
Um, and then existing landscaping, is there anything to be removed and then is there anything to post?
So nothing major, there are some existing shrubs, the homeowners are going to relocate, and they might install some new, new foundation plantings, but generally going to stay the same feel. Thank you. Yeah.
So this is one of those where I'm looking at it and I'm wondering if it's big enough, and I know the background are intuitive, because I'm talking about a bit larger deviation. I'm always concerned about the usability of the front porch. One of the things that you've done is you've used small columns, which is obviously very smart. Uh, you also dropped the, um, the porch to where you can keep it at closer to grades and don't do the railings, because the railings could take up to eight inches, but I do understand the interest in protecting trees, I'm not entirely sure about the walkway as to whether or not it warrants it, but from your perspective, you think that there's going to have full utility for seven feet wide based on how it's designed with those features?
Yeah, I, I feel like seven's a comfortable minimum, even with the railing, because a rail is going to come in eight, nine inches more finish. I, I, I feel comfortable with this, I normally end up around seven, and sometimes I push for more. I think as long as the homeowners aren't trying to do like a gathering of furniture and more, like if they just want to do an L shape versus like a full corner of furniture, I, I think it's fine.
What's the distance between the face of where it's going to be and that birch tree? Because you imagine if it was a, you would beat upon a tree, but the tree looks like it's.
From, you're going to, you're going to beat upon the dirt.
So it's probably sidewalk.
Very small.
I think that was part of that and sidewalk, yeah, disturbing the area.
Well, unless you're not building the porch in that direction.
Uh, it would.
Yeah, that's the front.
We didn't want to overlap the, the existing walk by that much.
A while. If I understand, like, it's hard to see through all these Halloween decorations, but if I understand where that tree is, it's to the right of the window on the right.
Correct.
So the porch, whether it came out fifteen feet, wouldn't affect that tree?
Except it would affect the walkway.
Affect the walkway, that's different.
Yeah.
They push the walkway.
Right, and then if the walkway. Right, and then if the walkway got pushed, then we'd bring the tree into play.
The drip circle. From the tree. Is, comes across the front of the, the same suit there. So that.
Wow, that that's a pretty big circle, but okay.
But I mean, that's generally where the roots are going to be.
I look, I'm not going to push you harder to say, you know, make it any bigger, but I, it just. Okay.
No, I appreciate that. I I think they're okay with, I think they're okay with seven, so I don't think they need for more. I get concerned with like Robson has a five-foot bonus, so everyone does five feet, and you can't really use them, they're decorative. So that's where I push, I know I push for more variance for, to get those extra couple feet, but I think seven, pretty much at grade.
With the silence, with the no railings.
No, particularly with the no rounds.
Oh.
Yeah.
That means. Brodsky, is that for you one in that one?
I think we did. It's a front setback.
No, how, what, which variant, which area are you? Do you want to?
Well, I think, I think it's a little of both, I think C one, and to the extent that, you know, it's it it the uh, location of the porch. Is driven by the location of the existing home. Uh, which is not uh, proposed to be moved. Um, and uh, with respect to C two, uh, the benefits, the benefits here are certainly to. Um. Special reasons would uh, that would be coming into play with, would would be. Um, uh, a variety of of proposed housing, uh, and uh, we don't see any negative impact. Based on uh, the fact that it's a single-story ranch. Um, and. Um. Uh, and we don't think that there's any negative impact to the zone plan, zoning ordinance, and 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 the neighbors. Inasmuch as um, it's open. Uh, it's a, it's a aesthetic improvement to the home. Uh, and um, you know, uh, it it it's something that is. Uh. Being retrofitted, if you will, uh, to a, an existing seventy-five-year-old home. Uh, and to try and modernize it a little bit in terms of functionality and usability by by the client. Anything else, Al, that I didn't see?
I, I think as far as. Architectural porches always seem to scale down and and bring detail to a home, so. I think from a massing perspective or anything like that, it it normally tends to help. Definitely doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
I think it's also material where this house sits in the street, the projection that we're talking about is is not at a corner, you're not going to be affecting sightlines. You've got homes around you which are imposing in different ways, but they're imposing. Um, and I I I think I'm leaning more towards C one than to C two, I I certainly recognize there's no movement of the house, it's. Possible here, it's a fact, it's not in order to find a porch.
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. If the board has any questions, the applicant is here as well, if the board has any question.
Any board members have any question? Are there any members of the public that have any questions or comments regarding the Shesky application? Okay, that's for flag non, anything closing, Mr. Brodsky?
Um, I think we've covered it, Mr. Chair, um, I think this is a modest uh, improvement to an existing home. Uh, fits in well with the uh, uh, in in the particular neighborhood. And uh, we think that the relief being so solid is moderate and uh, is modest, and I believe. Um. You know, very compelling to maintain the existing structure, uh, this is not a a raise and rebuild situation. So we would ask that the board uh, look favorably on that.
Thank you. Anyone have a problem with the hallway decoration? Um. I look, I mean, one of the things I'm looking at, shed, um, you know, I I think that, you know, we've seen these issues all the time. I just don't feel as though the 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 nature of deviation is significant enough to to, you know, to to make an issue of it. Um. I I I don't, I don't need to start, I just wanted to mention the issue about the shed.
That was. Well, the, um. There are going to be a rain gutter on this that ties back into the left.
Oh, so you did have, you did have more questions. Mr. Sasek, you understand the question?
Yeah, um. I I don't recall exactly where the gutters are right now, the downspouts, uh. Yeah, it would, it it would certainly tie in the actual gutter system, whether we need an extra downspout or not, I I don't, I don't know. I'm, we could probably get away without it. But.
Is there an existing driveway on this property?
I don't believe so.
What's the lock coverage based on the uh, the maximum of where these things might not fit?
So maximum is forty-five percent, currently we're forty point six, proposed is forty-one point five. So forty-one point five out of possible forty-five.
Is that calculation based on the existing survey with all the existing improvements, the back patio, the shed, the walkways, the whole nine?
Correct, yes.
See the picture here in the engineered, or it looks like there's a. A gutter on the left. Side of the house, and I don't see a downspout, so I'm assuming it's. At the left corner of the house. So. If we be able to tie into that and take it to the same place that the. The runoff from the roof is currently going.
You're saying it's over on this side?
I'm assuming it because it's not on the right.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. Um. Just run how how long the runs is.
What would be the advantage in that? I I don't know, concentrating the water flow is necessarily good, if we're worried about lock coverage, or if we're designed under that dimension, I think that's different, I'd be worried.
They're not putting it. At the front, which is the only level of point to put it, yeah.
I I would think that that's going to give it an opportunity to put on a property, but it's. Through whatever the current, I I don't know, it's not clear to me that would be.
These areas of, you know, where.
I I would think, I would think any of these front downspouts, if they, if they just go to a splash block, will go at the front, because the the grade. Flips slightly toward the street.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so the the way that, that the photo shows now, it looks as though the gutters that are on the existing overhand.
Yeah.
Take the water flow to the right towards the driveway.
Yeah, I would agree.
But I don't necessarily know that putting more water to the driveway would be great, I'd almost prefer to see if it dropped into the front door and let it, let it try and burst and move on.
Well, you know what, probably the best thing to do, the more I'm thinking about it, is. We would probably just tie in and throw a new downspout to the left over here, and I I think there's plenty, I think it's not enough.
That way you don't trap it.
I don't think it's too much run, yeah, so. I don't know if we could cat, I probably couldn't take all that that far, because they have to slope it a little bit, so there's only so much you can do without it looking wonky.
Yeah. Thanks.
Alright.
Are we good with the questions?
Mr. Chair, one comment for you, um, we mentioned the the shed in the back.
Yeah.
Um. It's a hundred and two square feet, and when it's over a hundred square feet, it is an accessory structure, so it's a ten-foot setback. If it was less than a hundred square feet, there'd be a five-foot setback. So it's, it's two feet, two square feet over the threshold of all any.
I said that to a hundred and two square feet. What are the dimensions of the shed?
Twelve, twelve by, twelve point two by eight point four.
From, from surveyors I've talked to about this, there's, there's actually, apparently there's certain legal. Legal amount of like wiggle room they have, where, like that nine point nine could be up to a foot difference, apparently. What I've been told, but.
That is not the official.
So, I'm, I'm pretty sure that shed is square numbers.
Yeah.
It probably is a hundred.
But it's an interesting comment, because the, what the comment says is that with it, with it's small deviation with regard to the size.
It'd be only five.
Five feet closer to the property boundary than it sits, and I think that that's, I think that's certainly something worthy of knowing. Okay, you ready to deliberate now? Alright, no more speaking to the applicant, other experts. Discussion.
I grew up by this property and uh. You know, looking, looking at the property and looking at the bulk of the house and looking at all the neighboring houses. Uh, I think if you come two point three, two feet three inches closer to the uh. Uh. You know, to the roadway. Uh, from this house, I think it's, I think the, I I think that's the minimalist, and I I just don't see that that's going to be a problem.
Good.
I agree with Skip. And I appreciate that it is uh. Uh, an aesthetic improvement to the front of the house and the neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah.
What you say?
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's uh, it's alright, and listen, I also think it's like a visual relief, being in this neighborhood, right, because it's a block of. Just straight facade, that really is, if none of those facades, all those two-story houses, not a lot of them are really stepped back, so it's really. I mean, it really goes right up, uh, I think it's kind of a visual relief, I think it's tasteful. And um, I think you could argue the C two as well, right? I mean, we know this is very good, everyone likes a porch. It's kind of a, a way of, you know, life, you know, a a non-dramatic way, right? Everyone's got them, and it's a big piece of the community, and I think it'll be an improvement.
Nothing bad, but it's. Well, ask out.
What's up?
Any preferences to where it trains? Not as opposed to.
No, I'm curious. Uh, you know.
As to what the applicant's counsel has said, driving it to the, in a sense, between the two windows, as I'm looking at, make it to the left of the.
I think, uh, all, all I, my only concern would be is if you moved it, if you drained it to the right. You'd be putting it between the house and. The walkway, which would be ideal. So, just, it's, to take, take it out on the left. Forward is fine, to the side is fine. Um, you know, visually for this. If you're coming down the street, there's. A mature. Large hedge that comes, I think, all the way to the street on the.
Right side?
East side, the left, the left side, and on the right side, other side of the driveway, there's a mature hedge that comes. To the then maybe six or eight feet of the street. Can't see the next house, next house, can't see you. Walking down the street, certainly from the east. You can't see this house until you're past. The hedge. I don't think that you'd notice. Uh, this from the street as much, um. From either side, um. You know, as as far as fitting into the neighborhood. This house.
Doesn't fit in.
Used to, they they all used to be the same, I I lived in the neighborhood for. A long time, but back when it was all still Allen ranches. Um. You know, and and everything else is just a lot more bulk. Higher and and closer to the street than than this is ever going to appear.
Yeah, I think when you compare what this is and what this is going to be to the neighboring houses, this is much more slight. I like any investment in a ranch that makes it more likely to stay there versus being torn down at some time in the future. Um, and with regard to the drainage specifically, I'm always inclined to talk about underground detention, but what I, what I. What I see this as is a very, very slight addition. The actual construction of underground detention would be so disruptive to the front, I just don't think that the net benefit warrants. That level of tension, of course, the numbers don't say that there's any problem with the lock coverage, so, uh, uh, just why I'm not leaning in the direction. Discussing that any further.
Could also damage that tree, if it's in the location, moving scenario, and I'm sure.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we uh, approve the. Uh, the changes as proposed. As long as there's no other uh, modifications to the uh. The house or. To the yards.
So what were you doing, you got that? Yeah, correct.
Um, Stantala, yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
From the longer.
Yes.
Mrs. Newman, yes. Uh, Mr. Shabati?
Yes.
Mr. Later?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Board.
Okay. Next application is the Greer application.
I'm, I'm sorry.
You shall be swear this testimony, well, I should bring your absence up to your next.
Yes.
You shall be swear this one, you can form more of the truth, I hope there's nothing of the truth.
Yes.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, okay, which same directions I gave before, um, with your board, you. Uh, bars for your testimonies, do you want to state your name for the record, it's not here, but I see you. Uh, follow directions of your potential. Well, my place is to where we were.
I had it at the east end, it was my last one.
Yes. Yeah. Uh, the additional exhibits, uh, A eight. Ten, twenty, forty, twenty-five, um, both sided writing, the throwing the applicant, talking about, uh. Revisions, um. This general, general square footage, lot size information that he has done by way of research, A nine, either revised architectural submissions. Three sheets. Uh, total twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the plot plan, uh, first, second floor plans, elevations. All those three sheets, A ten, uh, variance, what I've characterized as variance justification from council. And we have a new engineering report, ZB three. From uh, C I V Engineering, Public Secretary, Mr. Rizzo. Uh, dated eleven, eleven twenty-five, in addition, we have an exhibit. A eleven. Which is the certification from our board member, since it's uh, board member D'Angelo. As you guys read the transcript, we can see they are going to go forty, and we've given it in some video, examine the exhibits. And she is up to date so far. And as I said, we will mark that at A eleven. Do you have any other additional exhibits that I haven't already referenced?
Uh, I, I do, but just before, I, is my cover letter submitting, um. Uh, whatever the the date was, when I submitted the revised plans and um.
I didn't mark your cover letter.
But it's part of, but it's part of the.
It has a summary on it too, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's more than just what they're submitting, it actually has language on what the changes were. We, you had, that in addition to the separate writing that you sent later on in the day concerning variance justification for C one, C two.
It was earlier, uh, I think I sent, submitted the exhibit on ten, twelve, eleven as well.
The third letter?
Yes.
Okay, we'll mark that as A twelve. Reference the proposed addition, the additional findings and any previous coverage.
Correct. Um, okay, and then we have some additional exhibits, you ready for them?
Sure.
Uh, colorize, well, Joe, why don't you go through them and then we'll mark them as we go and put the, the, uh, top corner.
Okay, we have the updated amended site plan that has uh. Reduced size for the addition. Okay, so that's a colorized version of the first sheet of the revised edition.
Right, right.
Uh. Second sheet is the reduced size plan again. Um, you thought same, uh. A change to the profile of the addition.
So that's A thirteen, A fourteen, right?
A thirteen and A fourteen. Okay. Uh, revised elevation sheets. Showing changes, the change to the building. Highlighted. Third, and also the other plantings. Said also, I'm I'm up to A fifteen, what are you up to?
Yes, and that, this was part of A nine, that's the third sheet of A nine, and then this is additional, right?
Yeah.
This is, this is a new graphic, just showing the comparison and the outline of the building previously submitted. Uh, two feet an hour and with the, uh. Uh, roof line lowered.
Parish and graphic, what is the date?
Uh, well, we could give it, uh, any date, November, the, the. The twelve, I guess.
November twelve?
Yeah.
Thank you. And say sixteen?
If, if, this is all mounted on the same board, so you have three, uh, four separate pictures.
They will put that as a comparison graphic and total forty.
Right, okay, and that would be.
That's gonna be more A sixteen.
That would be part of that, okay, yeah. All right. Thankfully, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, uh. And before we get started, is.
Uh, just if we can do that, are there any additional issues you need to address, Mr. Rizzo, as a result of your?
Nothing else, nothing else to me, but I think you probably want to put his, uh, actual something else.
Yep, that's where I was going. Um, so. James Daly, uh. Architects and Associates, that's who prepared the plans, Jim Daly signed the plans. Um, and was here last time, as was Mister Sacco, Mister Sacco, can you, um, describe? Your role, uh, and employment with Mister Daly's firm?
Uh, yes, so.
None of your, none of your credentials have changed since your last testimony? Oh, which is not an architect, is that right?
I'm not a registered architect.
And, and is Mister, Mister Daly here?
Mister Daly.
Another testimony tonight.
This is interesting.
Right, yeah.
So, um, we have plans submitted under, um, under the seal of the licensed architect.
Right.
And the discussion that we're gonna have is related to the changes that have been made, Mister Sacco, you're fully familiar.
Yes.
With the changes, the process. And so there may, there may come a time where Mister Daly not being here may be something you wanna sort of pause on and what have you, but. You're looking to proceed with Mister Sacco's description of what's going on and allow us to try to get through this without Mister Daly being here.
Uh, correct, and I would submit that his experience in the field of forty years, um, and working. For architecture firms the entire time, um. May qualify him as an expert in architecture, however. For the purposes of what we're doing here right now, I don't think we're gonna get into too much detail where that's your main issue. Um, he has familiarity with the plan.
Mister Sacco, what exactly is, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, what exactly is your professional capacity? If you're not an architect, what do you do, Mister Davis?
I do design and drafting. I meet clients, I do site visits. Selling reviews.
Just to cover the record, can you, and I don't know if we did it last time, and you spread your credentials on the record. This point in time as to. Education type of work you do as following up with. Sure. Or move this question.
Sure, I, I studied, uh, architecture and fine arts at Syracuse University. And I have a degree in fine arts at Syracuse. And I have forty years working for New Jersey Licensed Architects.
So for those that aren't familiar, the way a lot of these firms work is the draftsman actually gives the drawings and the architect is the one that eventually certified them. So Mister Sacco, I, I would imagine, I'm not gonna ask whether you're actually prepared these or not, but you could prepare these drawings, I guess. Couldn't seal them as a licensed architect.
No.
So, this shot is almost okay with you, I, I would prefer not to go into whether or not we can accept Mister Sacco, uh, as a, uh, uh. Whatever it is, uh, let, let's go through the plans, let's see what you do, if not the issue, we'll, we'll find it at that point.
Perfect, that's what I was intending to do anyway. So with that out of the way, um. Just, we, we were here last month, we. Got feedback from the board, obviously, we've come back, revised plans, um, and we are gonna. Spend, uh, a few moments here, walking through what those changes were, and I'll ask Mister Sacco to point those out on the plans.
Okay, uh, starting with the site plan, or, uh, we have several changes, but I'll start with the building. Uh, we have, uh, moved the building in two feet, so instead of being, uh, an addition out at twenty-two, we're at twenty. Uh, that increases the side yard setback. Uh, to a thirteen point three seven feet. Where it was eleven and change. Uh, improves the distance to the neighbor to thirty-two. At thirty-two point one. Uh, we, uh, so we now we have a five hundred square foot additions that are five hundred fifty. Uh, the, we added. Uh, now we also lowered the, um. The roof line. Down, we now, whereas we had a seventeen. Seventeen foot eight inch high building from break. Uh, we now have fourteen point nine. Uh, we had, of course, this shows the plantings as well. Um.
So what were the dimensions of the room that's twenty wide and?
Twenty by twenty-five.
Twenty by twenty-five, and in terms of the reduction of pitch on the, or the, uh, sorry, the ridge height. No, was that driven by desire to make it less bulky? Was that driven by the change in dimensions?
Both.
Both?
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, it, what it did was it eliminated the hundred and sixty-five. Uh, square feet that we were, uh, accounting for, for the, the fact that it was above the second floor long. Um.
Oh, I hate that. No, I, I really, that really bothered me because it's not, it wasn't intended to catch you up, like, we sort of addressed it.
Right.
I, I want you to keep going, but I, I wanna, I wanna understand whether or not the reduction in the height.
Right.
Is something that the applicant prefers, or whether or not it's something that they're sort of. Throwing out there as a potential, whether or not it can go back. I personally wanna understand that.
Right.
No, I, I think I can respond, we just gave you that technical reason, right? We wanted to remove that additional square footage because. We understood that. You know, part of the calculation and the overall number was our problem, so in, in one way that technically addressed it, um. I think obviously the applicant's preference is to have what was originally proposed. However, um, I think. Part of the variance we're seeking deals with massing, it's not just with the floor area. Number, it's the volume of the house, and by bringing the roof line down, you somewhat address massing.
Alright, so I, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you how to persuade this board to grant the variance, but what I'm gonna ask you is whether or not. And, and we can do it at the end, but what I'm eventually gonna ask you is whether or not if the board saw fit to grant the variance at the greater height. Whether the applicant would prefer the greater height, whether they prefer it exactly as proposed, so just, just keep that in mind and we'll, we'll circle back.
Okay.
All right.
Just, I, I have the old plan, the old elevations in front of me comparing, and I actually think the reduced height looks better. I think it looks more balanced and less obfuscating than the, the other.
I wanna jump the gun, we, we, let's let it play out, and that's fine, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
Okay.
I, I have a sensitivity to that particular thing because I worked on that ordinance. It's creating problems that weren't intended, you do need to fix it, and it just. It's very technical, so.
Yeah, and it's also hard to calculate.
I, I, why did you, uh, why did you go with a, uh. With a crawl space rather than a cellar underneath the, uh, additional part of the. Uh, additional, underneath the addition, because it's not gonna count against your.
No.
Your, your square footage.
We recognize that, uh, but there was comments during the last year, and you know, there was questions, how much of the, the cellar is used right now? What portion's finished, um. At, something to the effect that that's a lot of area and you're adding to it, um. It's, it's anonymous, that was a comment. No, I, I understand that, but it was a comment that you have a lot and you're adding to it, and on the balance, if that's not. An essential port, portion of the application, and that's something that was a comment, we addressed it and removed it, um. And that's, that's the thought process behind that.
So we may well ask you the same question as to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't count, and we went through the calculations of average grade and the fact that the floor was. Uh, less than thirty inches above the average grade.
The addition is.
Yeah, no, all of it.
All of it.
Entire house. Because it seems to, it seems that that's the way it's being enforced now, is that. Instead of it being for new houses, it's being applied to every house. That does any kind of work.
Uh, correct, yeah.
And that is correct, it's under review though.
Well, well, hold on a second, uh, uh, with regard to this particular. Maybe we could talk offline about some of your experiences with the ordinances, because the intent is to improve the aesthetics across town. Not to make life impossible, nor to ask for the impossible, which would be to change something that's already exists. With regard to this application, however, this house has a first floor elevation that's thirty inches or lower.
Right.
And the addition is a thirty inches or lower.
Right.
And does that tie into the question with regard to the crawl space of the basement, or the cellar rather?
It. It can, because what it would do, we, we actually, to get this height, we actually lowered the floor a little bit. Um. To make it like massive, and so what it does.
You stepping down to the room?
Yes.
Yeah, so it goes to the whole, trying to address the cathedral.
Oh, so like something.
Yes. And what it does is it forces now the, wh- what we would want to be, say, a. Seven to eight in, eight foot ceiling height down into what could be a, a water table issue. You know, it just drops. No, 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 we haven't, no, we haven't done that yet.
You just presume on, on balance, you're like, you know what?
Possibility of it, and, and then also there were comments at the hearing about. How much usable space was down there.
So what's the stat down there?
Um.
Yeah, how many inches?
Oh, it's twelve inches, it's, it's, it's like two risers.
Oh, is it that much? Did, that step down existed on the, on the original, right?
No, it didn't, yeah.
What's the depth of the basement, so you wouldn't have had a water table issue, the, the existing?
We may not have, uh, you know, it doesn't necessarily.
Yeah.
Force that, and we're just saying that it's a possibility.
I think you're just raising it as a potential issue, I mean. Uh. I don't think there's been that experience.
And I.
Okay.
So. Those were, those are continuing and I, on, I guess, with some of the changes we've made.
Twenty by twenty-five, the original was twenty-two by twenty-five, right?
Right.
You had a basement, now you're posing in prospect.
Right.
The ridge height originally was what?
Seventeen foot eight.
Seventeen eight, and you brought it down to?
Fourteen nine.
Fourteen nine. Any other changes?
Uh, the additional plantings to, to screen it here. Um, along the, the, the front side and the corner that's facing the closest neighbor.
Right.
Um. You wanna point out that there's. Added a drywall to, to capture all the stormwater from the addition. Um, that's in the back behind it.
Right, you put a, a drywall behind the, uh.
So in your, in your letter, you stated that there's two existing drywells. Um, so this is just for you, just to capture the vision.
For the addition, yeah.
Right.
There's two on site now?
Um.
The, yeah, they're, they're, they, uh, they, they run down to, uh. Into the ground. Which, which corners of the house were they at?
They're in the back.
They're in the back?
Yeah.
You have the.
Do we know that uses drywall, or do we know where it goes?
I know that the area was set up into water drains, through the roof, down the. Like, and into the yards, and it's held in this area.
Yeah, it, it has a pop-out, right?
It has.
Like, so in the yard, there's like the circle, so if, if it's getting totally inundated, there's the little pop-out.
How long have you looked there? Did, did you install it?
We did.
Oh, you did, okay, alright, so you know it's a draw.
I mean, I don't, uh, can I sit here and say it's definitively called a drywall? I don't know, but I know it's, it's exactly what we're talking about.
It's underground attention, because the pop-up valve is fairly new, that's not thirty years old.
We did this with the project, you know, I think it was back in two thousand seventeen.
You did that when you did the prior renovation?
We did.
And you put in two?
Two in the backyard that runs off the top and out the back of the house.
And, and how much of your roof runoff right now do you capture in the travels, a hundred percent of it?
I think, I think all but the garage.
I think that's right. The garage is not captured, the main house roof would be.
Okay, so these four corners.
Well, not the four, because the front ones, no, right, the, the front ones goes, right, from the, uh.
Can you not just tie the runoff from the proposed addition to one of the other two, or is that not how it works?
That's not how it works.
Unless you even know how great.
It was probably calculated, because it was done in, in conjunction with renovation. Somebody, somebody like Jordan probably calculated it for what they needed.
Okay.
Probably a slight bitch larger than what they needed.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
No, what's the height of the last large?
Compared to the height of the addition.
Uh, okay. Good question, um. Uh, fifteen, six.
Is the garage?
Yeah. And, and the addition? Fourteen nine.
So what would you say for the street? It's probably a difference up to home.
Yeah. Well, we're all just way back, so why are you stepping down? Why are you stepping down the way that the family doing? Well, it's because of that, that rule now that. Uh, I, you know, we felt somewhat compelled to. To comply with, uh, we didn't want the additional square footage caused by the attic space.
So do you remember the, the, the complication comes in the calculation of where the additional square footage involved. Actually counts as part of the square footage period, it was a hundred and sixty or so square feet.
Hundred and sixty-seven square feet.
So they've removed it, so as, because on the plans and on the numbers, they wanna not have that one sixty. They also said that they wanted to reduce the bowl. In order to make sure the board understood that they were effectively trying to accommodate the concerns and keep the addition as small feeling as possible. So, so that was the purpose of what they did.
While still maintaining, having the nice ceiling.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was important, or we get the utility by stepping down to twelve inches.
Right.
Then, is that, that was our question?
Yeah.
Al, you had something on drainage again?
No, I, I just, when they mentioned the renovations in two thousand seventeen, I was just curious how we got to. Two hundred and fifty square feet across above the cap. Already.
In twenty seventeen.
In twenty seventeen.
Didn't we determine that that was in preseason reports?
I don't remember what the result of it was last time.
It didn't get, uh, there was no prior relief given on this property, so I'm guessing that at the time it came in.
I think that's correct, two thousand seventeen, it was not reviewed, it was approved, and when we talked about it last time.
It's had that preseason, that, that, then, that's, we should, let's face it, it's not that long, but we all sat on the board at that time, so.
Well, and so there had been some, uh, additions to that room, in fact, I even think there was discussion about adding, eating an air conditioner for that room. And they added windows. So, so that, so we, we've added that last time.
Yeah, no, okay. And, but we didn't end up with a copy of. The, the file from two thousand seventeen, as far as what was the?
No.
I actually approved to, to not, we see in this.
The application includes a question and a signature, and it asks whether or not there was a prior approval. Um. Do you know, Mister Sardo, for sure that in two thousand seventeen, there was no variance granted for the modification?
I, I know that there was no variance, um, sought or granted.
But there was certain approval if they did.
There was, there was a zoning approval, and I would say also that. Um. You know, our application variance relief requesting is, uh, inclusive of. Everything over the cap.
That's, that's nice, but. Uh, yeah, okay.
We're measuring that space differently than we did in twenty seventeen.
And I've been before this board, I've been before this board as well on other.
It was in twenty seventeen.
That's point eight. So I, I, was it compared point?
He said. That it's different space than was proposed in twenty seventeen.
Seventeen, it looked different than it does now, now it's more.
So, that's, I didn't, it, it's just.
No.
I'm sorry, I forgot that we had gotten more into that last time around, and it's come back to me now, and, and thanks for the clarification.
What did you say, Mister Sardo?
Um, I, I've been before this board on other applications where, um. You know, I didn't, I didn't file it, the applicant filed on their own, but where, uh, like a similar situation existed and the application was filed. You know, by parallel comparison. Like, in instances, if we just had the variances for an extra five hundred square feet. Then, you know, there was a whole. Discussion about, well, it's not five hundred, it's really seven hundred plus because of the existing improvement, so we. Just jumped the gun and addressed that right off the get-go and said.
Correctly, and what you're saying is, we're not hiding the fact that that's square footage, but calculated that way, we're presenting it to you that way.
Correct.
And to Al's point, the modifications to it and how calculated today, at least in part, relate to how things changed after seventeen outside of. The way it should have been though.
Correct, we're.
Alright, okay. Did we talk about the lock coverage? Because I, I thought I read that you were gonna move the hot tub?
We did.
Um, yeah, so, you wanna point that out, there, there was like a projection off the rear of the existing patio, like new, new area to put it, to move it on, which.
Yeah, we have this little bump out here, we're just trying to create a little more seating area, and so, uh.
But we shift.
Apparently, we were a little closer on the, on the cap than we thought, and so, uh, we moved it back in. So it's eliminated the, uh.
Or reduction in the lock.
Yeah.
The hot tub moved on paper, but is it essentially staying in the exact same location it is today?
Yeah, pretty much, uh, yes, that's, that's about where it is.
Are you shifting it with the stairs out of the addition, or is it really is okay where it is?
I think it's okay there, I mean, the stairs are there. And, uh, there's, there's space to get out.
So the reduction in that little extra pad there, plus the reduction in the. Addition.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is what got you.
Right.
And you were compliant, but you were close. And you were compliant, but you were close.
Right, yes.
Right, so I I think we went our our uh you know, we we added two point five five percent coverage and we're um. So uh the impervious coverage only goes up slightly more uh slightly less than the addition. Not saying that very clearly. But we're up two point five percent from the existing, but we're still under the forty percent.
Mr. Sardo, I'm gonna ask you to start at the top in terms of what you originally requested by way of variances, what the numbers were, and then bring us to today in terms of just from the top to the bottom, what just proposes you know it's different?
Yeah. Yeah. Um. So the floor area, well, the only variance we have is the floor area variance. I mean, so I'll start with that.
Okay.
Uh, but other numbers changed too, but I'll I'll focus on floor area. Um, it was four thousand one hundred ninety-eight square feet as submitted. Um, when we appeared before your last meeting. At this point, it is now three thousand nine hundred eighty-one. So that's a reduction of two hundred and seventeen square feet.
Hold on one second. And the way you accomplish that is by bringing the roof down to you manually reduced it by the one sixty and then you reduced the width by two by one five, that dropped a fifth.
Yes.
And those are the only two changes on the square footage.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Um, and well, I guess as it relates to that as well, the uh the setback setback was compliant from the side yard, right? Ten is required. It was eleven point six, I want to say, and now it's thirteen point three seven, thirteen point three seven. So that that went up about two feet. So there's an increased setback to the neighbor.
What's on it again?
The R ten A.
R ten A. And so we need exactly what on both sides, what what's it according?
It's a ten minimum, single side, and then uh combined twenty five and we're far exceeded.
Well, over fifteen on the far side. So your short side needs to be ten.
Mm-hmm.
Comply with that.
Right.
Comply originally and you can find now, but you're you're ready to get another captured problem two feet.
Right, so to our closest neighbor, they're seeing that two foot additional setback.
Yeah.
Um, there.
And so that so that two feet multiplied by the five is fifty. Outside of that, the only other difference is your move of one sixty-seven, which is the vaulted space, right? So if you take out the vaulted space, the only other difference is just moving it in two feet across twenty-five, that's it, you're getting fifty, is that right?
That that's on the square footage, but I would say if you're looking at massing and volume like drop down the height and shrunk it and now we put plantings in front of it.
Sure. Yeah.
So we're effectively trying to minimize that space as much as we can.
For what? Okay.
What's the frontage? Do we have an extra frontage requirement or something? Because I know lots significantly larger than the ten A lot.
We're we're beyond what's required. They're they're four point five five feet longer than the frontage, so.
There's no additional setback. So I wanted to go through the variances. There's only one variant. It's exceeding the square footage. It's not far, it's it's not a C.
Correct.
Okay, and so you you've explained how the side yard setback is improved with the addition. Is there anything else that you wanted to explain to us?
Um. Well, I I've mentioned the plantings and the the attempt to minimize the the massing and volume of it as much as we we could. Um. And and that's as far as the changes though, that that's kind of the summary of it.
And then the reduction in building coverage, block coverage and additional dry well.
Well, so but but you didn't exceed before, so you've reduced it overall based on the context of our discussion when it's time.
Yeah.
So so what's the requirement? Where were you and where are you?
Sure, and I think over that too. Um. And this is for for coverage now. Um. The existing coverage today is thirty seven point four. Uh. Proposed today at this hearing is thirty eight point nine. Um, and and last time we were here, we were we had put on our plans thirty nine point five and Mr. Rizzo questioned if it was slightly higher than that, but still conforming.
And what's the cap, forty?
Forty, yes.
Okay, and with a footprint of five hundred square feet is the addition?
Hmm.
We only that only nudges up that one percent?
It's it's increased to it's from it's uh well, it's it's a couple.
The lot's double sized.
No, that's a good observation. I'm I'm going thirty seven point four off Jordan's letter. Our plan says thirty six point four existing, so you're more on point with the two percent increase.
Okay. But you didn't reduce anything per se. This is um you you're not taking anything out that's already there. You you asked for less because you're not expanding where you were gonna move the hot tub to. So you retained it inside of its existing.
Correct. We we didn't remove any existing uh coverage areas.
Right.
You know, sidewalk pavement.
Yeah.
What have you?
Okay.
That was gonna be an additional deck construction, right? Sixty-five square feet is a more than.
Yes.
Yep.
Donald, are you removing any trees?
Um, I don't believe so. Um, and and you know, in addition to the plantings that are shown on the plan, I mean, if if uh the applicants has a willingness to work on buffering or additional plantings to what's existing there uh next to you know, the property owned by um Mr. Olson, lot fourteen, at the closest neighbor. So no. I think the answer is no. It'll be more green.
I mean, this was a pretty generous amount of landscaping already. There's some evergreens and uh there's a a pretty good sized tree in front yard as well as a holly. I mean, it's.
Oh, this is pretty good.
Yeah.
That's why I'm wondering if you were taking anything out.
No.
And you can you you hold that up again, please, on all of the 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 sort of mass and detail. So so that is from the side?
That's from the front.
That's from the front. It's significant.
Yeah, I mean, I do a calculation of that as as compared to the original where like eighty percent of what was the hot coin. So. Sorry. I'll give you, I'll give you a copy.
So one more mention to the board is years ago, when we were trying to figure out how to control maps, we had a thirty-five foot ridge height limitation in all ten. And I thought it was gonna be easy to bring that down. And we did bring it down. I brought it down to thirty-two. And what happened was when I saw houses being built at the thirty-two versus the thirty-five, I was really surprised that it didn't really impact this the feeling of bulk of the houses. But what was clear to me was that the steeper roof grit pitches were nicer. And and I I'm not racing to say that I think it looks better pushed down. And to me, that was not really the issue. It was really kind of the total square footage. It was kind of all of it altogether. I I would, I'm just throwing that out there. If the applicants happy with it, then then that's fine.
Hmm.
Um, but I just don't want to, for the sake of accommodating the conversation last time, see changes that may in the end, you know, leave you with a development that may not look as nice. Um, I just I just present that very considerately.
Mr. Chan, I have a question about the side yard setback.
Yeah.
For you to see on the revised day one, the applicant goes through a calculation and seems to indicate that there would be additional setback required, which is different than your numbers. I just wanna make sure. Using the right side of numbers and I'm assuming that you have gone through this and that your number is correct. Um. There's also something.
Yes. It's uh it's right here, Jordan.
So if if Cory's numbers are correct, then I would just ask that that gets cleaned up, the subject, any uh approval?
Man, I I certainly feel confident in my numbers. I don't know what the discrepancies are, do you know?
What's with the lot?
I don't think there's any discrepancy. It's it's that we we took the lot width from the thirty foot setback line and it was hundred twenty-six feet. And so then there's a little calculation. There's a ratio you know, you have for every foot and a half.
Yeah.
Uh, every five feet, you have to add a foot and a half, but it all went to the driveway side, not to the.
You you were calling the lot with one oh four point five and you're saying you need five extra feet to add on to the so you stayed at twenty-five and you were calling it a wider lot.
Four because it's it's set dash.
Yeah, it's on the frontage though. It's not the the lot goes like that.
Yes.
So you the the extra five feet is only on the frontage on the street, so.
Right.
We're not at one oh five.
But the ordinance works if the lot is wider. The ordinance works to require a greater total setback. Doesn't change the minimum on the one side, does it?
No.
Okay, so the total setback that we have here is thirteen on the new side as proposed, thirteen change?
Yes.
And how much do you have on the other side?
Uh, it's
Well, it's.
Well, it's forty-two point seven five.
The the total is sixty over sixty-nine.
Right, so what I want to highlight is whether you've added additional or whether you haven't, they far exceed what would be required, even if the lot were substantially larger than it is. So it's a non-issue. The number should be right.
Right.
You're right.
And the lot depth is is different between the two, between Jordan and from the applicant as well. So I just wanted yeah, let's try and get it cleaned up.
Yep.
We.
Yeah, I I have been keeping a note at the end through the end that just says that um all discrepancies should be handled for finalizing the plan.
Um, thank you.
In this case, I think it's compliant either way. Uh, file plan.
Yep, I I've made notations and uh you know, was prepared to stipulate they were gonna address to that point.
Okay.
Have we been through it all?
The the changes, yes.
Did you also add an AC unit?
Yes.
Okay, and then but the setback actually increased because it's next to the house.
Yes, but if you take the, if you look at it from the standpoint of the ten foot setback, it it kind of lines up. It's the same as the corner of the house.
We're talking about whether or not the side yard setback is gonna be measured to the structure or the AC units? They're recalling them?
No, so it looks like the AC units are increased in the setback, but there was a second one added. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Right.
They're not supposed to be within the setback.
No.
I'm answering a whisper over here.
Yeah.
There's an accessory setback to the AC units, so it's ten feet and they are the the we added one, but we increased the setback from last time. They are now uh about fourteen and a half feet inside property line.
No, because they're setback from the closest corner.
Yeah, yeah. Is that generator existing or is it?
Just being moved.
And there's no penetration on that side of the family room? There's no problem there?
Um, no, there's uh there's some uh blank wall space on that facade.
I'm just saying, is that you know, there's.
Yeah. You got these two windows, here's the generator. So, I mean, we're good.
Open window.
Yeah. Oh, but there was what? Okay.
So that's an intergenerator.
Okay.
Okay.
I saw what looked like one month.
I see it on the cert. What is certain? I don't know. It says two AC units and it says generator.
On the server? Mr. Brandon. Generator?
Generator, I promise you.
And and not proposing, okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's no problem.
But there's power outage.
Any further?
Um, I none of, I mean, I I don't have to go through it. I I will rely on the uh the various support we've submitted. Um. I I just to kind of sum it substance of which is, I think that um we meet the positive, we're focused more so on a C, I think than a C one, a C two rather than a C one, flexible. Um, and that we have significantly um improved the existing conditions based on the uh the screening of the existing patio and you've heard that testimony corroborated by the neighbors. Five neighbors showed up, all in support, three of which have contiguous properties. Um. We're, I'm happy to talk about that more if there's desire to do so, but we don't have anything further about what what the changes are or um.
Well, let's let's get into the nuts and bolts of legal argument. So it's C two, that's what we're working with? All right, so walk us through the legal argument on C two.
So there's several prompts, right? We relate to a specific piece of property. Subject property is one, an oversized lot regularly shaped. Uh, we advanced the purposes of the MLUL, several of them. Um, I've highlighted C, E, I, G and M in my outline, um, and I will try to just quickly summarize the positive criteria that uh you've heard testimony from our architect, um. And I think you heard it echoed by some of the board members of these O S here, that the addition balances out the mass thing of the existing res- residents. Um, and this contributes to a more attractive structure and advances the purposes um of two C and I promotes good design and desirable visual environment. Um, we'll note that the height of the home addition is less than permitted by the zone and it achieves an appearance of less massing than um and less volume than might otherwise be indicated if the house was at a full height, it was allowed. Um, so in that regard, we think it provides for adequate light and air. Um. As I noted before, this addition is gonna be really limited um visibility. It's only a limited number of the neighbors or those walking through the neighborhood. And it creates a screening of the existing patio, um, the hot tub, the fireplace accessory, um, and the activities that go on out there. Um, and that's not only a benefit, it's personal to the homeowner, but you heard in testimony from the neighbors that they were in support of that. They thought it was a benefit to them too, that they're not seeing that someone get out of a hot tub in the middle of the afternoon. Um. The proposal meets otherwise meets setbacks and lot coverage. Um. A- a- any alternative to um kind of add area or accommodate what we're trying to achieve here would require demolition of substantial portions of the existing structure. Um, and the reconfiguration of which would be more that more expensive and lead to more disruption in construction time, disrupted the neighbors. Um, so that's that's our positive criteria. Uh, C two, the benefits outweigh the detriment. Um, I think we've just talked about some of the balancing, I'm sorry, some of the benefits, um. Whether it be the balancing of the massing, the screening of the uh back accessory structures and use of the patio, uh, the additional plantings, the enhanced aesthetics that outweighs any detriment related to this construction, this addition. Um. And you know, a- a- as with all variance applications, you have to meet the negative criteria that you can't and no variance can be granted without um a showing that it won't substantially detriment the public good or detriment or impair the zone or the zone ordinance, zone plan or the zone ordinance. Um. So we talked about that this lot is nearly doubled the the size for the zone that's required. Um. And that the property can accommodate the addition proposed and it's not gonna substantially impair the zoning ordinance. Um. You know, we we do note or point out by reference, we did talk about the upzoning and how that works, but I think it's also important um to recognize that based on, we're only two percent shy of having a double lot as far as lot area goes. And if you were looking at it from that perspective, you could have up to five thousand four hundred and eighty-three square feet of. I'm respectfully, I'm just gonna keep going. Um. And that's why I specified that it was related to just a lot area. But that exceeds what's being proposed by approximately fifteen hundred square feet. Um, I think this is relevant to the evaluation that the reasonableness of the variance sought and that the property can accommodate um the a structure of this size. Um, the the variance itself is not inconsistent with nearby development. Um, there's several properties nearby of smaller size or similar size. We've noted previously, the nineteen river lawn at thirty-six twelve square feet, thirty-four river lawn at forty-four eighteen and sixty-six river lawn at forty-one oh four. So there's a a pattern or consistency that would be compatible and fit in with the neighborhood and and again, we think just because particular site, the way the house is oriented and where it sits in the neighborhood, that is despite what the number looks like, it's not gonna actually have that feel or be as massive of an impact as the number might look at on on the page. Look at on on the page. Um. I've already touched upon that the homeowners appeared and spoke in support of the application, um, John Walter, who's directly across. The cul-de-sac was in favor, he he notably said that the addition would screen their use of their backyard, I mean, he'd be the one impacted by that. Uh, Mr. Ellison also spoke favorably and he's the nearest adjacent uh, homeowner on the cul-de-sac. As the sunroom, the two, it's two hundred and fifty-one square feet, it's, it is existing, it's improved. Um, is within the setback. It does not impair the zone plan, it's modification. Um, or or removal of it, reconfiguration would be a financial hardship. Now, I understand a financial hardship's not something that might be cognizable necessarily under the C one, but under C two. It can weigh into the considerations, as long as you still meet the benefit detriment test, it can be something the board can consider, I think the board should consider it here. Um, I wanna keep going, the, we've talked about the the minimization of our our roof height of the addition, it's now fourteen point seven five feet. We've made efforts to minimize the massing and the visual impacts, we've also added the plantings to try to, you know, enhance the greenery and also. Give some screening to the additional massing. Um, the applicants offered even to go beyond that and and would be amenable to planting, um. Additional plants in that area of the setback, uh, or in the side yard setback uh, adjacent to the neighbor if it was the board or the board's professionals. Um, recommendation or desire to do so. Um, the impervious coverage complies with the standards and we've added a dry well to manage this, this stormwater from the addition. Um. The materials and design are consistent with the existing residents and will enhance and the visual appearance of the residents and the neighborhood. And that the design is consistent with the neighborhood and the development, um. So, again, in conclusion of all this, the board's grant of the application will not be a detriment to the public, in fact, the public. With an interest in this application, appeared at the hearing and spoke in favor of the application and the grant of this fairness would benefit the community. Uh, nor will grant of the relief request to impair the zone plan or the zone ordinance.
So that's your argument as written?
Uh, uh, with, I I probably saved about forty-five seconds if I read it verbatim, um. But I didn't wanna leave anything out.
Okay, you have anything further?
I do not.
Mr. Greer, uh, could could you come forward, we talked here? So before we wrap off the, the testimony with regard to what you've proposed, and I'm I'm interested in answering you with regard to the changes that you've made for last time. You've heard my commentary with regard to the the ridge height, so that's number one. The basement or the cellar rather versus crawl space, that's number two.
Mm-hmm.
You've got a step down at twelve inches that is part of the new design, that's number three. Anything else? If there's anything else.
Can you say this though?
Yeah, it did, so. Believe it or not, we understand how hard this is. And we really appreciate, I can speak for everybody cuz I know they feel this way, that you've made an effort to listen to what we've said. And to modify the proposal in order to accommodate the concerns so that you can get it figured.
Mm-hmm.
At the same time, this was really close last time, in my view, and so what would be. A disservice to your family and the neighborhood would be for you to wind up with something that isn't really what you want. If what you're doing is making an adjustment based on stuff that we talked about, but that may not have actually won the day with regard to an approval. So, with regard to the ridge height, and specifically the the basis for that being the removal of a hundred and fifty square feet. Are you comfortable with the aesthetic look that you've achieved with the modifications? In terms of the overall design? You prefer the old design, is there something about the utility of the house as you originally designed it versus the way you have it today, just as to the ridge height? That you might want us to understand as we weigh the current proposal versus the alternative of maybe considering whether or not that ridge height. Doesn't really swing somebody, you know, to a no, a- and they would still be a yes, I'd like to isolate the issue.
Sure.
And 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 I wanna do it specifically because I'm recognizing something here that I don't normally see. And that is sort of effort to sort of do some things that I'm not exactly sure. Go ahead.
Um, so I think you're right, I think what I tried to do is think. Board member by board member, what he just spoke about and try to think about how we could fix this to make it amendable and can kind of move forward the variance, so. I know Mr. Ryan talked about the the dry wells, we went that direction, I know Dr. Lawfer had talked about the basement and we kind of eliminated that. We always struggle, my wife and I, with the hundred and sixty-seven square footage with the ceiling cuz we didn't quite understand why we were being dinged for it to begin with. The ordinance I know is is kind of a moving target, so I know we've kind of talked about it back and forth. If you're asking what our preference is, our preference would obviously be to keep it with the original design that we had and avoid the step down altogether, and that would be. You know, the best alternative that we can. But if we need to actually change it and make it look less bulky, looks less massive to accommodate what the board likes. We're amendable on that, on this end to make that work as well.
So, I think that answers the question about the ridge height, with regard to the cellar versus the crawl space. Your, your family would prefer to have a cellar. And you're prepared to construct a cellar, but the design as proposed tonight intends to accommodate those concerns. And so, but is it correct that you prefer to have a cellar?
I I'd say that's, of the two, if we isolate the two, what's more important, I think the the original height. And the vaulted ceilings are more important in the cellar itself, so if I had to choose between the two, I would take the original plan on what the ceiling looked like. In regards to the cellar, I mean, we do take into considerations with water table. I know Dr. Lawfer had also talked about total usage of that area down there as well, so. It's something we can live without, I think what we're really trying to get our hands on as a family is to get that extra five hundred square feet of family living space. If we had a additional basement, that's great, but I wouldn't put that as a priority, um, the way we kind of look at the ceiling situation.
I I think that the biggest concern last time was the collective impact of. The additional finished space, which is that had been the three season room, plus this. And then what you wind up with in total, and when that number has a four in front of it, and a zone that's supposed to have a three in front of it. Everybody kind of slows down a little bit and looks at it a little bit more closely, um, and with regard to the design, uh. Mr. Sacco, is that right?
Yes.
Um, the the drop down of the foot, just notoriously trip hazard, awkward, um, is there. Short the issue of the height in the room itself?
Yeah.
If if that was no, if you weren't constrained with regard to where you were, would that come back up again? And?
Yeah, most likely, most likely, um. Um, Mrs. Greer, I kinda wanted the, I I think she she preferred to have it down, so it was closer to the patio level. So she didn't have to like walk down steps to get to the uh, the patio, but uh, that didn't seem to be something that she was uh. You know, that got concerned about, she seemed more interested in the the ceiling height now.
So you either have to step down into the family room or step down in the patio.
Yeah, yeah, one or the other.
Couldn't we, yeah, okay.
But I think she would prefer to have it raised if she could get that.
To have a step in the house personally, that's.
I I think too, we we host a lot of holidays too, and I know it said this is the last time. My my mom's getting older, Vanessa's parents are getting older, like I I worry about that step down personally.
Um. I I think having that step down in the house is a nightmare.
I I agree completely, we were, we were just trying to comply with this.
I would keep the floor level. Lowering the, I I understand Mr. Leader's uh, comments about the ridge height, but remember, we're coming in two feet, so if you hold that original. The pitch would have to change if you're coming in two feet, it would be, it would be steep, right?
Different heights still, right?
So, I mean, a person, and I said it before, I like the way the new one looks. I would bring bring a floor up to be level with the floor in the house. And then let the ridge height land where it is, as it is, I think we're, what do we say, nine inches shy of the left side of the house?
The garage?
The garage. So now you're gonna be three inches proud of it, I think that if we're me, I would make the floor in the house level. Have your steps down out to outside and it would probably look even closer to to the other zone.
So, so let's do this, I I don't wanna get into an awkward discussion and deliberation while we're directly talking to you, we should. Close out the testimony, but is there anything else that you want the board to know with regard to what we're doing, uh, and what we're looking at and what we're about to deliberate about?
No, I appreciate all your time and your considerations, we try to be thoughtful talking about the C two and C one, I know John talked about C two, um, first hand. In my testimony as well, I'm also an equity trader, deals with overseas markets, I take international calls sometimes very early in the morning when I'm working from home. Uh, forces my hand to kind of scurry around the house and not wake my uh, my children now, so to have this extra space actually helps in that situation too. So I guess that kind of plays into a C one hardship situation too. Um, to to be fair, I I think anybody in Fairhaven declaring a hardship for a C one is 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 very hard, but. Based on the line of work that I have, this, this is something that's very real, like the office I work in right now is. Right next to the kids' bedrooms and there's plenty of mornings I'm taking calls at four thirty in the morning.
Okay. This is a family room, no office, right?
Correct.
There's nothing labeled office here at all, is there?
No, there's no office, but it gives me another open space to take a call as opposed to the open house that can, you know, whether it be next door to the kids or in a kitchen that. Transit transfers upstairs pretty quickly.
Okay. Mr. Scher, anything further before we go?
Nope.
Just wanna, I just wanna ask one question, trust here, um, Mr. Greer, with the dry well they're proposing?
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you know that you'll need to do an engineered plan with soil testing and capacity analysis?
Okay.
So if you were to get, we'll know if you comment that would extend to resolution compliance.
Got it, so that's a contingency of any approval, this one needs to be done a certain way.
Yeah.
And that, most builders in this area are familiar with this process and it can be run through that, or is it?
They know that they need an engineer most likely.
It it's routine, I'm I'm not, I'm not overly concerned that you're gonna find that your soil is not gonna work for this, um. So we've done it before, but it goes.
So, the water table.
Right.
To make sure that it actually can infiltrate down to the ground and to make sure that whatever size pit you're digging is actually big enough to hold the water that's being sent to it.
Got it. And this would just be a dry well for the addition, right, the the five hundred square?
That's what you're proposing.
Correct.
Hmm.
Understood.
Good, George?
I'm good, I just wanna make sure he's aware, thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Leaders, or anything else that I did not answer, that you were looking for in us returning tonight?
No.
Okay.
Thank.
Thank you.
Okay, and nothing further? Alright, are there any members of the Pope that have any questions or comments regarding the uh? Career? Okay, right, back home, Mr. Scher, anything enclosed?
Um, no- nothing further to add?
Jordan, the, there's been a lot of cross-talk back and forth as to. Your numbers, their numbers, what do you want to see from the applicant in this condition of food by way of?
Yeah, I have it in my my uh, letter.
Um, it's all covered there?
It's covered here, it's it's, it's letter five A, so basically it says that, um, numbers in my letters. Are accurate as far as I'm concerned, it should be act- they're accurate by the board. Um, then discrepancies, the applicant, you know, should contact me ahead of time, but short of that, a final plan should reflect. The numbers that are in my letter except for the board's ultimately what they want.
If there are ambiguities, could you just spell out what does our force, what do we have?
We're good.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
We we would submit the plans for your review.
It's a technical.
To be, yes, and and it'll be worked out.
Yeah.
And I don't have any concern that. We're gonna have an issue with any of the uh, caps.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna deliberate, I I'm gonna make the suggestion, um, a- as we have our discussion. That we view this as effectively a three-dimensional space. That you don't consider the dropping of the floor, nor the crawl space versus the cellar. Unless anybody feels strongly that they wouldn't wanna see a cellar uh, over a crawl space or what have you. There is a groundwater issue, and that is that, you know, just like putting. A cup into a a thing of water, you push the water out, so it is a fact. That if there is a cellar versus a crawl space, there is an impact on the the floor here. However, the the dropping of the twelve inches, we've certainly talked about. And it doesn't at the end of the day come into any of the numbers, and so. I don't know that anybody would feel strongly enough to wanna dictate whether it's a crawl space or a cellar, and if if no one disagrees with me. Then I would suggest that you look at the proposal for the addition as it sits. And then maybe have some discussion about whether or not the ridge height was important. And then if there is a feeling that the latitude is is not been a sway decision one way or the other relative to the variance. Then it could be presented with latitude, as opposed to redesigning or changing anything. Uh, with regard to what the the final design looks like, I made this an issue tonight. Um, and so I apologize for confusing it, but as a simple Mr. Greer, I I I don't. I I don't want burden of feelings though, the accommodations were mistargeted. It's clear to me that what we have is square footage that's far in excess of what's required in the zone, it's always what it was. And so it wasn't about bulk, the structure to begin with, although I do appreciate. The reduction in size, it's a little bit more modest and it's off of the sideline and and when I opened the plans when they came in. I I I noted it, it was, it was obvious that there was efforts to try to bring it back a little bit. So, with that as a leaping off point, um, I just hear what people think.
I mean, I've I've stated what I said before, I do like, I appreciate the reduction in size, I appreciate, I think the ridge height. Looks better now than it did before, just my personal take, and coming in the two feet, if we hold the old height, it would be extremely stupid. I would like, I I I don't like the step down in the house, I think it would be better having that a level. Plane from the, uh, and I think you get more usual, I really do, I think it gets, it's very awkward. And then.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. The 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 proposal to drop it down was in order to create a similar volume of space on the interior, you're not suggesting, you're. You're commenting with regard to the design, but you're not suggesting that we should dictate one way or the other, right?
I don't dictate one way or the other, I'm just saying, I don't think it's, I don't think it was necessary to drop it down, but. To get the same result, you came in two feet, you you flattened the ridge.
Well, what they did was they, they dropped the ridge by almost two feet, they dropped the floor by twelve inches to capture a similar level of volume. They made that design call, so if you bring the height down, th- this is the way that they decided to go and wanted to get that same.
There's definitely a difference in pitch though from the old roof to the new, isn't there?
Yes, well, it has to be, cuz it's it's less width. But but they purposely brought it down. I I'm all all I'm saying is, I I just want it to be cleared, if what you're saying is, I don't wanna drop twelve inches. Then what you're saying is, I I I I wanna restrain.
So if you don't drop it twelve inches, here's the question, maybe somebody's can answer it, it's more than that oriented behind. If you don't drop it twelve inches. What are we counting for the wall space now? You know, I'm confused by the twelve inch drop and what what where that one sixty-seven came out, did we lose the one sixty-seven because? Of the roof pitch, or did we lose the one sixty-seven because we got the floor?
You you lost the hundred and sixty already for you, George, we lost the one sixty because the total height of the interior. Is less than the trigger point where you actually start measuring it a second time, and so it's.
Is that because we're measuring it from grade or because?
Is that because of the drop down or is it because of the lower?
Yeah, that's. If if there was no drop down and everything was lifted afoot, then there would be vaulted space out of town.
So, there would be about fifty, it'd be about fifty square feet.
Yeah, if there was no drop down?
If we didn't drop the floor by twelve inches, George is saying, correct me if I'm wrong. We raise it back up to grade and we recap, then we're rebounding that space.
Yeah.
But if that, if the whole thing shifts like this?
Yes, yes.
If if it moves.
If the ridge height goes up.
Sorry, I'm thinking the whole thing is shifted, you're saying if the roof stays exactly where it is.
Right.
Then, yeah, then now.
It it's a non-issue, they they put it in either place, it doesn't change that split, which.
They just, they just simply dropped it because they wanted the feeling and aesthetic.
Yeah, so they might want it dropped.
They they do, that that's what they're asking for.
Well, I think it wasn't clear as to whether they necessarily, I mean, that was a proposal, but they could go either way because was, there was discussion about perhaps a step. Down to the patio versus step down into the.
So, on those, the condition fundamentally has to change, the only thing is there's some hokey stuff with the ridge that's now come out, but.
But then on.
That's only fifty square feet.
Yeah, if you raise the ridge height in order to level the floor. You have to then count the one hundred and sixty, that's the whole.
And the answer seems to be yes, to some degree, he's saying about fifty, thirty.
Yeah, it's, it would be a little bit.
That would be because of where we're measuring the height from?
It would be less than last time because it's less width, it's less feet, so I start there.
Okay.
I but but I wanna make this point, Mr. Greer, I'm gonna come back to you, but only for the purpose of answering this question.
Yeah.
You not originally proposed a drop down in twelve inches, you proposed it as part of this, but I have assumed the whole time. Is that when you decided to drop the ridge height in order to make it here smaller so as to accommodate the. Is that when you decided to drop the ridge height in order to make it here smaller so as to accommodate the board's concerns? You then dropped the floor by twelve inches, your wife may have decided she likes it that way, but I thought it was a consequence of dropping the ridge height.
Uh again, I'll answer this and say that I think we. Drop the floor to accommodate and try to comply with with what you guys had from a ridge line and 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 a maximum situation. If if we have a preference in a matter, I I agree with Mister Neshesny and I definitely would not wanna step indoors. And I'd rather have it flat.
But there this. There there's nothing about, now that you've dropped the ridge height. There's nothing about the twelve inches up or down that affects that excess square footage, am I correct in that?
The if if we. Can you, I'm sorry, can you just rephrase how you how you're saying?
Now that you've dropped the ridge height.
Right.
To now fourteen and change.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
You you whether the twelve inches is dropped, or whether it is level with the rest of the first floor elevation. There's no consequence on the measurement of that small area in the vault as to square footage, correct?
If you hold it there.
Right, if you hold it.
Yeah.
Right. It does not matter, they can do either one, holding the ridge height exactly as it is, they could keep it level, they decided to drop it. Because in in response to the ridge height coming down, they'd wanna capture more volume, and that's the only way to do it.
Great, I'm looking at a number here, twelve foot seven, okay, so that's the elevation from the floor, that's the measurement from the floor. To the peak, to the interior.
Yep.
What was the old number?
That triggered it.
Okay, what was the old number, I don't see it, I seventeen eight on the eye of the old planner from you as well. But I don't know what that number was from the floor to the. Cause the seventeen eight is not measured from the floor, it's measured from grade.
No, it was, um. Okay, it was, it was fourteen foot seven.
Fourteen seven, so two feet.
Yeah.
So you gained two feet, so if we bring, I. My personal thing is, keep the new plan and just shift the whole shift the whole box up by one foot. Make it level in that in the house, have your step down to the patio, I like the new plan with the two feet in, I think I appreciate the the reduction in size. And I think it will. Well balanced with the other seven.
I don't think we make that call, I don't think that that's up for for our discussion, I think what I was getting at is if the volume is is an issue for them. And you permit them to increase the ridge height, they will not need to drop it by the twelve inches, they can make it flat and they can still have the vault that they want. I don't think you need to dictate whether they drop it or not, I I think you can you can evaluate this and grant an approval. Based on the outside box and where they set the floor is where they set the floor, okay?
Square footage will not change.
No. And and I'll go one further. When we designed the new ordinance, what we said was thirty inches. Where the where the height is thirty inches or greater, counts as square footage, the idea was on a. We wanted the point that we started to capture what the square footage of the second level was, what we always had was a a measurement. That was basically intended to capture a traditional eight foot floor. With an additional space and a vault until the point where that second space above could be finished. And have the minimum UCC requirement of head head of seven seven feet, what's happened is that in reading it, plain language. The the old rule of how high your vault has been complicated by the measurement that was not intended to be changed. By the ordinance in this case, and it is fixable, should be fixed, it's wrong, the impact isn't supposed to hit this applicant. And the the one sixty, I would say, we could complete this. That that's well within our discretion, and under the intent of the ordinance, they're being caught up in it, and it was never intended. To have caused them to feel as though they can't have a sixteen foot vault in soon.
We are articulated this way, but we guys are right. Should it be expressed as that the that the square footage remains the same. At a ridge height not to exceed. We give a we give a value there, measured from. Just a grid.
So that's the flexibility I'm looking for them to have. I think that may be the way you wanna go, if you can, if you're, if that's where you want it, I I don't wanna make the call. I don't wanna make the call as to whether they dropped a twelve inch. I'm suggesting that the two feet that they've taken off of the ridge, I don't see it as material. And that have the states that they want, not that I will make the deal size, they'll still make a change, but I didn't mind it, but that wasn't the issue. It was the total square footage, that was.
Than the reduction of the height.
Look, I I thought this, I thought this was super close last time, because a four thousand square foot house in this zone is is large. But the context of the neighborhood is that there are larger homes below, this addition is in a location on this lot where you will not be able to see it. Even if you go all the way down, you're only gonna see a little bit of it, and the numbers don't lie. At almost twice the size of lot, they're still at just over two of point two oh in terms of floor area ratio, so. The problem with this is that ordinance is not flexible, it doesn't allow you more square footage just because you have a bigger lot. But in terms of evaluating how to modernize homes and allow people to have spaces that they can use, while we cannot take. Into account the personal situation with regards to working, the real question for us is whether or not. Plus or minus four thousand square foot home on a plus or minus twenty thousand square foot lot in this day. Is is contrary to the zone, at least that's where I'm at, and that's what I think we're being asked. And so the slighted, the slight change to it, and it was close last time, I I think it's clear that I I support it as it stands. Um. That's how I see it.
Well, I said enough, go on back.
Alright, well, my my feeling is, you know, not to drop, not to drop the floor, you don't you don't need to step within your house. Uh. But that's up to you guys, alright, I have no problem with that.
I agree with you.
And 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 if. Uh. I think it's a beautiful plan and a beautiful area of the of our town, and I I don't I don't see. I don't see this as being out of scale with the rest of the houses, you know, in that area. Uh, the whether or not you do a crawl space or a cellar, that's up to you guys as far as I'm as far as I'm concerned. And if the ridge height has to go up. A foot so that you don't have to uh. Uh so that you don't have to to do the step down within the house, I'm okay with, alright, that that's that's up to your discretion.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So so I I just wonder. Well, I I I will point out that. The issue as to whether or not the slight increase of the ridge height, I I think what you're saying, Skip, is that even if that triggers. Some small slice of extra square footage in a way it's calculated, your indifference to that.
I don't have a fault.
Right, right, thank you. Well, keep going, who next?
I I agree with Pete, but I think that the second plan, um, I prefer with less mass, and I'm. Really like this to get fully around the four thousand square feet, rather than have any additional vault and space. Act as leading on to four thousand plus just for um. Plus and even if that stands on its own, I I really think that this is uh is better. I don't care about what they do inside the house, I don't care about crawl space or cellar. But I I think I like the less minutes and I I would feel better less than four thousand.
Got it, okay. Who else on the right?
Maybe y'all? You have any thoughts?
I mean. Remember when you're approving this five hundred square foot room, that you're also approving the additional two hundred and fifty square feet above the cap. That was arrived at by getting a permit in two thousand seventeen for a. You know, three season covered porch, which is now. Got walls and windows and is a conditioned space. That is going from that to in the elevations that were given to us. Smaller windows, more walls, and still gonna be a conditioned space. That you're approving that as well, that creep that happened between two thousand seventeen and now. How, we don't know. We decided we wanted more rooms, so we heated it, we put windows and. You know, um. The the idea that. This is fine because we could almost subdivide it based on the. Area of the lot, when you don't have. Even the frontage to sit to subdivide it is disingenuous, it's. It's it's not the minimus, it's. Almost twenty five percent above the cap. The, you know, how how it looks and. Whether the neighbors like it or not, and whether it's gonna affect the water table are all. Considerations to some degree or another, but I I don't see that. Having an oversized lot supports exceeding the cap, which is there. Blind of the size of any lot. The cap is the cap is the cap. It's not a ratio, it doesn't matter how big the lot is. The cap is the cap. Um. So I I. Plenty of you here to vote, I'm in an ultimate capacity right now. So I'm just laying out for you how how I feel about it, my opinion, but I also have some questions. Um, you know, if if Jordan here didn't have. PE and CME after his name, we wouldn't be able to use him as our professional. Um, you know, if the attorney, we we rely on professionals because we're volunteers, some of us. Are attorneys, engineers, but I also have a problem with. And then to denigrate your forty years of experience, I've been doing this for fifteen years, I'd be, I'd I'd love to sit on that side of the table and get paid for it frankly. But. We're relying on. Something we can't certify, the plans are certified, but he's over here scaling things.
You you asked me a question. He asked me a question.
It's closed. But. That's not. Getting certified to us. And and I can only recall one instance in the fifteen years that I've been. Volunteering here when that has happened before. Didn't make any sense to me, I mean. So that's all.
Okay.
To add to the first half of Al's argument, I have. I'm a little split on this project because one side is kind of from the outside, it does bounce the home, it's in keeping up the neighborhood. It does add privacy to their backyard, um, and there isn't a lot of public passing by. But on the other hand, it's hard to ignore the fact that they're already over cap, they closed their center, which wasn't um. Permitted, and they seem to already have a lot of usable space. Between an enclosed summer, an existing sitting area, an existing living room. Uh, separate dining room and a full basement, finished basement that. Isn't in the plans, but no one's mentioning it, um, that just seems like a lot of space. Um, so I'm kinda split between uh going with the cap. And going with the outside and neighborhood aesthetics.
I'm split. But I gotta tell you, I I agree with the first half of Al's argument too, no nothing against your credentials, I I don't find to be uh. You know, at risk of anything here, but I think, listen, I think we've never relied on the size of a lot and not to diminish, you know. You know, and no, you know, not to diminish the oversized nature of your lot, but we've never relied on that here, right, at least in the time I've been here, and that's. An argument that's very easy to make for anyone who has an oversized lot, right, you know, I live in uh R five, my lot's oversized. You know, does that mean I should put three thousand square feet on my lot, no, right, and that's why the cap's there, so. Uh, I think I struggle with it, I think, although this is a very nice analysis here, I think there's plenty of houses on this. Lot here, eight or ten of them I can count by eyeball, and that are around a half an acre and are sub three thousand square feet. Um. I don't know, and I'm very conflicted to to Jackie's point, because I know you have tall children, I'm sure that's why you went to the vault, I get I get it all. Um, I just feel like it would be difficult, given how we treat other applications, so. I'm very split.
I um. I I I feel, I'm also torn on the precedent, which we're not actually setting precedent, but the number. Um. So I am curious as to what the number would be with the. Dropping of the, I I mean, is the number not changing? We're gonna keep whatever they're saying, it's gonna be under.
So it's the number that they've proposed, because by reducing the ridge height, they've taken out the penalty square footage that came from the mall. So that is not an issue as proposed tonight, whether the floor is dropped twelve inches or flush. It's no difference, and the total number is what you see at the thirty ninety.
Okay. Um, that does make me feel more comfortable, comfortable about it, um, especially given the. Extenuating circumstances in some regard with the fact that the location in on this street. Where they are, um, the neighbors are supportive, there are lots of other houses that are also um. Oversized.
There are a lot that aren't, like.
That are.
Many that are not, yeah.
Right, but there are also many that are. Um, and so I I I tend to, I just think that. I appreciate that they are working with their existing home, um, that they are making improvements. Um, I appreciate the way that they are screening, I also like the fact that it does. Somewhat privatize um. That area of their backyard, uh, I think there are benefits to it and I would support it.
So I don't really understand the screening argument, I'm because part of the reason why. You could argue that this is not offensive is because of where it is. And I I mean, I I just don't really understand the screening argument, I have to say that the the struggle that I had last time. That I think is still here relates to the finishing of the three season room. If this application were thirty seven fifty on a twenty thousand square foot lot and this were the addition, I think it would be a lot easier. I think the reason that it's become complicated is because the collective change feels larger, and in fact it is. I kinda wish the proposal was that we will take out the finish finished finishes. And we will make this now a three season room in the back, the way it always should have been, um. But that isn't the proposal, what I, what challenges me about that feeling is that no one will ever know, it will make zero difference. And the only place it makes a difference in the way that you evaluate this potential house relative to the neighbors. And whether or not the neighborhood is a neighborhood that can sustain in a almost four thousand square foot house. And so always struggle with that kind of slippery slope, um. Okay.
It's not gonna look familiar enough, to that point, I think it doesn't look any different to me, whether that's an open sunroom.
I agree.
An open porch or an enclosed space, and nobody from the street will ever know the difference.
I totally agree, I understand that.
Except when, except when people come in.
While you're looking at numbers, okay, when you look at the, I mean, you look at the plans, even if you come to on base.
Trouble is, it isn't your particular home, right, and I hope you understand that, it's that people come in and make the sardine all the time and it creeps, right, and it gets.
I get it, and we have the standard.
But we say that that. But we push back on all the people, and the more it happens, the the worse it gets, and then we begin to be biased if we retrieve one application different, although they're all.
Well, I I think there are, but there are bigger houses in this neighborhood.
A few, yeah.
I think I think you have to think about the neighborhood too, though.
Yeah.
I think you're talking about a street that's a little bit unique in town, where the only reason you're gonna go on that street is if you lived there, there's no pastor, there's no way you're going on River One Drive.
Yeah, no, that's true.
And having driven on that street many times, I choose not to drive away. Because you can't.
So there's the other thing, which is that this is not a tear down, this is not start over again, this is not a proposal to build a four thousand square foot house on the existing footprint. What this is a proposal for is in addition to a structure that has some vast historical significance, but it's more of a traditional house that's been there for a while. And so what you could do, if you wanted to rip the whole thing out, is make the first floor more usable by changing the layout altogether. And so, other than the fact that it's an incremental um ass from the same family. Had this, if this were a different then, not the family that developed it in seventeen, I think that would also be easier. Because what you'd be looking at is, well, this is a an addition that's intending to make this house more usable in modern times.
Yeah, fresh, fresh looking, fresh by the out, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody wanna try and convince anybody else to change? Anybody want to try and convince anybody else to change their mind?
I I just like to recognize that you have to make a concerted effort to come in with less mass that I think it'd make a big difference to the addition, I also appreciate the active drywall and I do think the planning mattered and kind of scream off that back patio area. They took the hot tub back off that notch and built back on the existing patio, if I understand correctly. Um, I think the effort to at least not have that cellar, I, to your point, Mr. Leader, is that, you know, the cup in the water, you know, whether or not they choose to do it or not, I guess that needs to be seen, but I think there was an effort to try to listen to what we put on the record in the last one's meeting and that matters to me.
Yeah. Okay, so we're at the point in deliberation where somebody needs to put forth a motion. That motion has to be either to approve or deny the application. Um, and I think based on the opinions that have been circulated, I think I can't agree. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the application, the revised application. I don't think there's any conditions.
The correction of the all the numbers.
Yeah, so whatever that is.
That and the drywall design calculations.
Right.
I'll second.
Mr. Nieschesny?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo? Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forten?
Um, this team.
Dr. Lawper?
Yes.
Mrs. Newman? Abstain. And Mr. Leader?
Well, let's total vote, count four.
Four.
Four in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm the only one that gets to abstain up here. That's all. So I'm going to note that, um, I I I certainly could vote in favor, I am going to abstain because it's easy for me to abstain, I choose to abstain when I can. I want you to understand that I recognize all the things that have been discussed are true. You've made a tremendous effort to try and figure out a way to make this work, I know the board appreciated that. This was close in the beginning, it's close in the end. Um, and this board struggles to try and preserve your neighborhood to be the place that you really want to live, and I know that sometimes people don't perceive what we perceive with regard to what's too much, the lines are always fine. Um, but there's nobody in town that cares more about your neighborhood than us. So I'm going to abstain and and with that abstention, you have four affirmative votes.
And we've already got a rate. Congrats.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I I want to make that comment while we're still on the record. The motion to approve it as proposed was sort of qualified through the special. We are not committed to the reduction of the of floor height by the twelve inches, they've raised that floor by twelve inches. It makes no difference either way, it doesn't change the statute, like, it's just it's good. Right, everybody agrees with that?
Yes.
Yes. So you will, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good, um, Matt then?
Uh, Mitch, I'm super nice very immediately, um, I don't think there were any changes. Like a motion approved, I'm sure.
Right, Mr. Nieschessny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forten?
Uh, approved. Yes.
Oh, abstain. Uh, Dr. Lawper?
Yes.
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 The only other thing is the the calendar for next year, um, we circulated it before last meeting. I think anybody that wasn't here has had a chance to look at it, we won't be voting on it, so the reorg meeting in January, so I don't really think there's any.
It's not clear what the dates, like the definite dates are, because it discusses the alternative, but we may have a question.
No, it's.
Yeah, so the question mark is if you accept it, that's what it would be, so if I'm proposing as an alternate, all of this.
Any conflict as a question mark, but the proposal date of the proposal dates are in parentheses.
Right. Okay, okay, so that would be the proposed date, so as long as you're okay with the proposed date, you don't see any additional conflicts or issues to change it, that's what.
But again, we'll we'll memorialize it in January, can I think, I think we might be actually good with this.
So it stays a question mark until January?
Well, it's unofficial until January.
Well, it's if you see a reason that you don't like that number or that date.
Yeah, reach out.
Call it out now.
Yeah.
Because it does go to print in a, in a, for a calendar. But it's, it's made official in January.
And we've been extra diligent this year about school holidays and religious and everything else.
Are we going then to twelve, four sixteen, seven nine, eleven twelve?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to be clear. So one more comment on the record before we go anywhere, then we'll open to the public, I hope you have anything. Um, don't brought to our attention earlier this week that there are some, um, people that have been taking our letterhead, um, and.
Not specifically in there.
Not specifically in there?
No, no, it's not happening in Fair Haven, but it's going on, okay.
So out, so out there, there are people that are trying to, um, create bills for boards and sending information to applicants and professionals about paying boards with wire instructions or nothing?
What's happening is there's a scam to use a borough's logo. They have the information as to who's on there because they can access your agendas. And then they directly contact the applicant and say, oh, by the way, your escrow's low. Please wire money to us. Please don't call because this is how we do things, we do things, wire transfer. If you do want to speak to someone, then they give them their number to speak to. So that it it completely cuts the borough out of it, but because this is happening on, we're to our attention, we're, it's not prevalent here in Long Island, but but it's happening.
I'm I'm seeing it too, and not only is it on the borough's letterhead, but it also actually signed by someone in the in the borough, they could say, she'll listen.
It's a little sophisticated, if you really read it closely and you were experienced in this, you would probably pick it up but realizing many of our applicants, it's, you know, it's the first time they've ever had anything like this, first time they're seeing it, they might, I'm not saying they're not sophisticated, this is very sophisticated.
Actually, some don't even realize, right? Except I don't track how much is at the.
So here's what everyone wants to know, and I'm also putting this on the record because I want anyone who's reviewing the record to have an opportunity to hear this. The borough doesn't work via wires, we only take checks. And so the checks have to be brought directly to Borough Hall and that's the way we process these things, that's the way we will always process these things. I understand that council is going to add some language to some of the, uh, public facing materials.
We've already taken care of.
That's terrific.
Yeah, so the applications have been updated, it's been posted on the website, Doug gave us some footage that we could use, put it on the website, sent out, um, a blast.
So so what a world, what a world we live in. But but beyond that, this isn't about somebody getting scammed out of a couple of thousand dollars or whatever it is, it's about how it feels when it happens. And I don't know if you know anybody that's been scammed under things, but.
Well, especially from the borough, it's like dirty, it's like a government thing, like you trust it, you know, it's just.
It's just, it's just terrible, so everybody be aware of it. Um, be vigilant on your own about these sorts of things, and if anybody ever asks or if you have an opportunity to help somebody understand how this works, check to the borough, no other way.
Yeah, the borough actually sent an email about it yesterday. So anybody that's on the contact that's got a very succinct email basis saying, this is how it works, so they're on top of it. I don't know many people read them, but I.
Okay, uh, any any comments from the public?
I was just going to mention scams.
Uh, nothing further? Uh, no script close, all in favor?
All right.